I'm free on Tuesday. I'll call it. I'm calling it. Yeah, I think Tuesday night.
All right, let's do it.
Call the meeting to order those who care to please stand for his opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Franklin, will you lead us in prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you today for this opportunity to shine in following in your example. We know our time here is limited, and we ask for your help and guidance as we endure this journey together. We ask for your help in being honest with our words and in our actions. We pray for peace, stability, and security as we work to represent our greatest asset, the people of Republic. Please watch over us and help guide us to remain committed by always doing the right thing at the right time for the right reasons. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full room here tonight. Welcome all. There are some seats, so jump in. This may be a while, guys. So I don't think you guys were anticipating as much of a show as you're going to get tonight, but you're going to get to see a lot of stuff, but we will get to what's important to you as well. So with that, I would like to open it up for citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to something that is not on the agenda, please approach the podium. You'll be given three minutes to speak. And I've got slips, and if somebody doesn't walk up there, I'm just going to start calling names. All right, I'll start here. Kathy West. Ma'am. If you just want to stand behind the podium there. Look this way. Just walk right around the other side there.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No worries.
You got it covered.
I'm a public speaker.
You're showing us all how to do it, so we appreciate it.
Hey, folks, I'm Kathy West.
Where do you live, ma'am?
I live in Republic.
Okay.
I'm sorry I haven't stayed with the council and kept up on what's going on. I moved here after the Joplin tornado.
Okay.
I was buried in that and lost everything. I'd worked in real estate in 40 years in merchandise.
Welcome, Kathy.
And there was one house I could afford.
Okay.
And I bought it, and I've loved it ever since. It's right downtown Republic. And my friend Charlene was telling me that there is some new housing projects going in and trying to come into Republic. And I appreciate all housing. I think everybody should have a home. Okay, this five acres on 1100 North Main, and then the 25 acres behind it, I can tell you, is a real bad project to even think about. The reason being, the infrastructure can't hold it. Now, if you go on out 174 and make another exit where they can get out, there's going to have to be two or three exits out of that neighborhood, I can tell you for sure, if you do that. Because I bought in, I worked for a builder in Atlanta, Georgia, and he was the Cadillac builder of the neighborhood. And we had five other builders, national home builders. Okay, I bought one of his homes, and it was one of the smaller ones. I wanted to start out small, and he said that he was going to build bigger homes at the back of the subdivision. And I was all for that. I love to sell real estate. And anyway, that didn't happen. What he did was he sold 20-some acres, almost 20 acres of the project, to scrub builders coming in from wherever. And they went from a two-car garage down to a one-car garage. People were lined up down the street, having parties all night long, throwing bottles on the curb and everything. And let me tell you, that cost me a lot of equity in my house. It was a prime location in a small town south of Georgia. It was a historical town called McDonough, Georgia. I'd always lived in Marietta and worked for the top builders on the north side. Anywhere from 500 to a million-dollar homes I was selling on the north side. But this was a young builder, and I wanted to help him out, okay, for the goodness of my heart. Well, he didn't think about me when he left me there, and it lost all my equity in my house because the homeowners association could not do a thing about it. The city did not stand behind them, and there was a big problem.
Now, Ms. West, I appreciate this. You've reached the end of your time, and thank you for letting me know your thoughts.
Okay.
Now, I will say, you can go ahead and have a seat. This was about items number 13 and 14. That was our mistake. This was in the general citizen.
Oh, oh, oh.
You're fine. If that's the worst thing that happens tonight, it's been a good night. Right? So you got your thoughts out first, and ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hope y'all do the right thing.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to move on to Ms. Garten. Am I, I can't, I can't, Garter? Garter? Ma'am, I'm sorry, I can't read your writing.
That's Garten.
No, it's my fault. Now, this is about something that is not on the agenda, correct?
Right.
Perfect.
Well, I signed an agenda thing before the meeting, but...
Let's, let's hear what you have to say, ma'am. Let's teach you.
My problem is the house across the street from me that is in the Republic city limits.
Okay.
There is two equine being kept on less than a third of an acre. There's only nine tenths of an acre there. Back in the 50s, late 50s, when I-44 ran through there, there was a house being, had to be demolished or moved. Place where I live, and I have lived for 56 years. The people we bought it from bought just a little section to have that house moved on for her mother and father. It's a single-family residence. It's got like a 12-by-25 metal building and a concrete block garage, a big driveway, a front yard, and a little bit of room for two horses. She's been there 16 months. The manure is stacking up. The smell is horrible. The fly situation is terrible. I mean, Republic, you're progressing great, and you're bringing restaurants to this part of, that part of the country, and that I thank you for. But I have businesses on my property. And one of the gentlemen who leases one of the buildings from me is here tonight, and he can tell you, the odor and the fly problem is terrible. Your customers complain about it. They don't like the fly situation, and they don't like the odor. They're not going to come back and do business with you.
Right.
They don't do business with them, they can't pay their rent. That's half of my income.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is a situation, it's in the city limits. You have an ordinance that covers this. No person shall keep a cow, bull, mule, mule, or jack, or horse, swine, or sheep that is within 100 feet of a church, a school, a dwelling. It is 62 feet from my house where my bedroom is to your city limits. It's destroying my businesses.
Yes, ma'am.
It's destroying my well-being.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. You've seen Mr. Cameron sitting up here taking notes on this. We will look into it, and until somebody tells us about it...
Well, your animal control people came out. I talked to my guys. Jason Johnson is here. He has new Lubentune and All About Tires. It's a problem for your business, right?
Good.
It's just a livelihood.
Well, now that we know about it, we can look into it.
I appreciate it.
Very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
So, ma'am, I will go with the city attorney too, just to review the code that you're referencing. And so you will hear from my office regarding the subject.
Thank you.
I will visit with the city attorney, who also serves as a city prosecutor, and so you will hear from my office on the subject.
Okay. One thing I didn't bring in, we're all on private wells. There is a row of houses that have like five people on one well. You've got all this animal feces washing down into our groundwater.
Yes, ma'am.
So take that in mind, too.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Ms. Harmon. Am I getting this right?
Good evening, ma'am. I was before and asked about a trailer that's sitting in front of my house. It's been sitting there for 14 months now. It's moved one day a week. The rest of the time, it just sits there. The guy's using it for storage, but he won't park it down in front of his house. It sits in front of my house. And I've talked to everybody. The first person I talked to said, you have an ordinance that they can't sit in the street unless they're hooked on to a car. But when I called the police and talked to them, they told me that they were too busy, that they wouldn't do anything about it, even if there was one. Well, that's a nice neighborhood over on Cox Street, and that, he has room to set that, he even poured a concrete thing out in front. He has room to back that trailer up there on that, but he absolutely will not. And if he was using it for work and moving it every day, okay, I could deal with that. But he's not. It's sitting there five out of seven days every week, and I was told that they're sitting all over town. But that's not true, because I go to garage sales, and I've only seen one other trailer sitting in the street, and it was sitting on a side street where it wasn't in front of anybody's house. And I can show you pictures. This is the trailer.
Okay.
It sits there. And this is my house. That's my flower bed that's sitting right in front of, down here and here, and you can see where the trailer's sitting. This is his house down there, and you can see there's absolutely nothing in front of his house.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't think that's fair to me and the other neighbors to have that sitting there when we all keep our cars in the driveway.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you don't have an ordinance, I think you need one. I don't know. I could just rent a pod and set it out front for storage, and that'd be pretty nice, and it wouldn't be taking up any of my yard.
Ma'am, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes.
We'll get back in touch with you.
I'd appreciate it because I made phone calls again here before, and the police treated me really rudely and told me they just weren't going to be bothered with it. And I don't want to fight with you myself.
Yes, ma'am. That is all that I have slips for. Citizen participation wishing to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to something not on the agenda? Seeing nothing else, I'll close citizen participation. We'll move on to the consent agenda. These are items number one and two on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committees scheduled, we have a board of adjustments meeting on May 2nd, 2024 that was canceled, so don't show up for that meeting. City council is on May 7th and May 21st, and our planning and zoning meeting is May 13th, 2024. Moving on to old business and table of items, item number three on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-14 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Missouri Department of Labor for establishment of an employee apprenticeship program. Excuse me.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff? Chief? Any questions, comments, or discussions from council on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-14, please.
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number four on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-15 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title VII Utilities, Chapter 715 Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Article 715.2, Use of the Publicly Owned Treatment Works, Section 715.130, Connection to the Publicly Owned Treatment Works of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the staff?
There are none.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from council on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-15, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Now take a roll call vote. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number five on our agenda, this is 24-16. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-16 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Republic R3 School District and Drury Properties, Inc. for right-of-way access and other related obligations as part of the new Republic Intermediate School Project.
Thank you, ma'am. You moved seats, so I was looking for you on the second and third row. So any updates from staff?
No updates.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from council on this issue?
Quick question. It says in the project issue, it says new intermediate school, but the issue statement says new middle school. Is it just a typo or just...
That's the same project. It would be a typo. It's an intermediate school. It's a 5-6, so it's not traditionally a middle school.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-16.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will take a roll call vote. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number six on our agenda, this is 24-17. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-17 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and Drury Properties, Inc. for right-of-way access and other related obligations as part of the new Republic Intermediate School Project.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff on this issue?
No updates.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-17, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number seven on our agenda is 24-18. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-18 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Republic R3 School District and Springfield Evergreen Holdings, LLC, for installation and maintenance of sewer infrastructure to service the new Republic Intermediate School Project.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff?
No updates.
Any questions, comments, or discussion before final passage of this ordinance? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-18.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will take a roll call vote. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving right along, we have item number eight on our agenda, this is 24-19. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-19 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Republic R3 School District and Great Escape Beer Works, LLC, for installation and maintenance of sewer infrastructure to service the new Republic Intermediate School Project.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from staff on this issue?
No updates.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-19, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. We will take a roll call vote. Ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number nine on the agenda, this is 24-20. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-20 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title I Government Code, Chapter 120, City Officers and Employees, Article 121, General Provisions, Section 120.025, Mayor and Council Compensation of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments from Seth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So obviously, I presented this at the last city council meeting. During that time, there's been quite a bit of discussion related to the bill or the proposed bill, which is generally what the first read is anticipated to generate, is what are the discussions or comments that would be related to amending the bill? There have been several different ideas that have circulated, and so this is the forum for those that are here watching how this is supposed to work. So council members are not allowed to talk to one another. It has to be conducted out here in front of everyone else, but we get to see it as a staff, and so to compile that into potential amendments. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I know that the city attorney has worked with a number of the members on potential changes to that, and so what we would do at this time is just entertain any of those motions to amend the current ordinance as presented.
And that's great, but could you explain what the current ordinance, as it is suggested here without any amendments, where are we starting from?
Very good. That's a great idea. So basically, the original intent of the ordinance, so when we drafted it, each council member at the present time is compensated at a period of, or at an amount of $200 per month, and the mayor is compensated at $400 per month. So as per the city charter, which is the constitution of the city, a new seated council, which is seated tonight, cannot be seated, once they're seated, compensation cannot be changed. And so this would be the last meeting by which that was done. Has to be read two times. And so we've presented a opportunity to make that change to $250 per meeting for city council, $500 per meeting for the mayor. Now, to clarify, the current chart or the current ordinance, the way it's drafted, if a member misses the meeting, they're still compensated. The new ordinance is drafted is if a member missed a meeting, they would not be compensated for it. And those that are unfamiliar with the season or the history of this, this elected body or this, this board, there's been a lot of vacancies and people brought in, people that have missed meetings and unable to have a quorum. So the idea to insert a per-meeting cost is if there's absence, there is no compensation, be that for the mayor or be that for a council member. There was no real, the last time that the, I believe it was initiated in 1997, which was $100. It was not changed, it was changed in 2008 to 200. It has not been even addressed since 2008. So therefore, it was presented prior to, there was not, it was just, it was not a, it was just an opportunity presented to this council for consideration before a new mayor and council is seated. Also considering the fact that if this is the rarest situation in my 31 years in government I've ever seen, all nine positions being sworn in on the same night. So if it's not addressed at this stage, then you would have half the council and the mayor that's being seated for a four-year term. If it was voted in, say, next year, it would be staggering before they would ever be adjusted correctly. So you'd have half the council making a certain amount and the other half making. So that's why it was considered at this time. Therefore, we would entertain a motion to amend as we've presented it. Again, that's the whole objective, is to throw one out and to see what, what the council would like to see done with the ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Neil, I understand that you have a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And part of that is, it was a good idea. I liked it. I wish we could have come up with it in November before anyone signed up to run, since the idea was to generate more interest, right? We had five seats that were unopposed. If, if there's more money, then maybe more people would care about it. My amendment is to keep the dollar amount the same. What I would like to see happen is for the council to actually look at how much time we spend and figure out what a fair amount is, so that it's not just kind of a gesture of compensation, but say if we're spending 25 hours per meeting, what would a fair compensation be for someone's time for that? And so for that, I would make a motion to amend. Do I read all of it before we, okay. Yep. So a motion to amend Bill 24-20. My motion is to amend the proposed ordinance by striking out $500 in Section 1 under mayor compensation and inserting in its place $200, and by striking out $250 in Section 1 under city council compensation and inserting $100 in its place. Again, the point of that is it puts us back where we were, other than it's per-meeting, but essentially, per month would be the same amount of payment until we have the opportunity to, to figure out what a fair compensation would be, if that's what we're trying to do.
So we have a motion on the floor to amend the ordinance. Is there a second to Councilmember Neil's motion to amend? There is not a second to Councilmember, Councilmember Neil's motion to amend, so that would die.
So it fails for lack of a second.
So then it would revert back to the original motion, which is the pay raise.
And, Mr. Mayor, I also have an amendment that I would like to offer.
Okay.
In exchange. I really appreciate what we had to say, Mr. Neil. You couldn't have said that better. This really was a good conversation to have six months ago. Unfortunately, the way everything transpired and just the timing of it, it fell here where it is today. Looking back at this, you know, our discussion from last time, all the things that have transpired since, it really has spurred a lot of great open communication with the public, so I am very thankful for that. We have already started that discussion with the public. Looking at this, you know, I kind of wanted to come back here tonight with more of a compromise, and I understand that, you know, after looking at what staff had presented, and you look at that, and you really take what Justin Neil had said into consideration of really being able to assess this job and, you know, protect this for other people. And that's one thing, you know, really key in this whole conversation, is as hard as it is to have that conversation, you know, it's really not about us. It's about the city council and the mayor and how they represent us as citizens. Since I've been sitting up here, we've just gone through time and time again. And so, you know, this was all brought out just to try to encourage council's participation, because, you know, every time, we have more to do. And so even as coming in as our mayor, I'm going to be asking council to do more than what we're accustomed to. So looking at this from a compromise standpoint, bringing here tonight an amendment, proposing an amendment to amend Bill 24-20, and my motion is to amend the proposed ordinance by striking out the phrase "for each regular or special meeting he or she attends while in office payable on a monthly basis" in Section 1 under mayor compensation and inserting in its place "per month during the mayor's tenure in office," and by striking out the phrase "for each regular or special meeting he or she attends while in office payable on a monthly basis" in Section 1 under city council compensation, and inserting in its place "per month during the council member's tenure in office." And, just looking at that, it's, it's a small compromise, it's not a huge increase, as much as I want to tie that compensation to attendance, I'm also looking at, this meeting is just a small portion of that job of council member. There's three to four times as much preparation put into this meeting than the actual time in the meeting, and so I didn't want to discourage someone from not doing that role, simply if they knew they wouldn't be able to attend the meeting. And so that was kind of my compromise in bringing forward that amendment.
So for my clarification, just to make sure I, I'm tracking what, and I don't know if I'm allowed to, so if I'm understanding you correctly, right now, before any ordinance is passed, mayor's getting paid $400 a month, city council's getting paid $200 a month, you're proposing upping that to $500 a month for mayor, and $250 a month for council?
In the same structure as what we're in right now, if that makes sense. So it'd be a $50 increase on council, and a $100 increase for the mayor.
All right. We have a motion before this council, is there a second to Councilmember Franklin's motion to amend this ordinance? There is not a second, so this motion also dies, which goes back to the original motion. So, this is 24-20 as drafted. We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussions, comments, or, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, so if this isn't accepted, it would stay how it is, is that correct? If this, if this proposal's not accepted, then it would just stay how it currently is?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. If it fails, it would just revert back to the current ordinance as it's drafted.
Thank you.
It's on the books.
So no keeps it the same, yes changes it. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, sir.
Just briefly.
Because that's what you're known for.
Put a clock on me, man.
We're both out of here, man, I can say that.
So, I, I made it known last time that I personally believe that compensation should not be something that council members receive. I also understand that my opinion should never be the one that is solely taken and made laws from, right? No, I should never do that. But, from where I'm sitting, I didn't know, and I, I believe it was Councilmember Campbell also confessed to this, that when we were appointed to these seats, we had no idea that there was compensation. I don't think any member of this council can say that the compensation they received was a deciding factor for them wanting to run, or continuing to be here. The argument that increasing compensation right now, besides being just a bad look for the city, from the outside looking in, I think, the argument that if we increased it by $50 or $100, it would entice more people to run, I don't buy. I don't think that that's the truth. I think the reasons that people don't run have nothing to do with money, it's because they don't care, which is their right, that's fine. They do care, but don't think this is the right job for them, they can't find the time to do it. I, I'm lucky, I know a lot of us are. My wife is a, is a therapist at the VA, she treats trauma, she works a real job. I have a ridiculous job, but it allows me time, time to pick up my kids, which is awesome, but also time to respond to emails, to go out and visit with folks, and it's been a treat to be a part of this council. But, the reason I did it had zero to do with money, and everything to do with wanting to serve. And I think that, in the face of all that we're having to pay for now as citizens, the increase in our utility bills, as we try to get that number lower and lower, and I see work being done by the council and the administration to do that, I just don't think, number one, it's a good look to increase the pay, number two, I don't think it matters. I think it's an arbitrary number, at this point. So voting to increase, to me, makes zero sense. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, you're out of line, out of, out, no, 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 not citizen participation. No, still not citizen participation.
I'm leaving in like 10 minutes, so.
You guys can go talk outside.
The, the one point I'd like to make, like Mr. Franklin brought up, we put way more time outside of this room. This is such a small fraction of what we do. My counter to that is, if you're not here to vote, it doesn't matter how much time you spend. Because if you're not at the meeting, it doesn't matter who you listen to and who you talk to, if you can't come in here to represent them, then it should factor on your compensation. I mean, it's good to listen to people and to talk to them, but if you can't show up and, and do what they're asking, then it's probably, you shouldn't be compensated for that, is, is my view on it. So, to me, that was the best part of this, was the fact that you're only compensated if you're here, even though this is the smallest fraction, it's the part that matters.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Gary. Mr. Wilson, when you raise your hand, I immediately call on you.
Okay. All right. I've had several people talk to me about this pay deal, and they say for $200, there's no way in, you know, where they'd do it. That's just what I've heard from different people.
Yes, sir. Good? Mr. Franklin?
And I, I just wanted to mention, I, I just, I appreciate having this conversation, and, and back when this had all started, I had seen that was on there, this had all been spurred by me asking for this to be on the agenda, and it was just to have that discussion, because we desperately need to have that discussion. I've been up here for six years, and finding citizens to be involved is one of the most difficult things of this job. And it's not in a selfish reason, it's nothing else, other than trying to find a reason for this to be attractive, so that the council members realize the importance of this job in representing the citizens. So this was never really about increasing our compensation, it was about trying to protect our team, and our efforts as council to represent the citizens. We've been here tonight already, we can see what a difficult job it is, and we've heard from a lot of people, they're happy not to make these decisions, and there's not enough money to make up for it. And so this was just kind of a way to look at that compensation, and try to take care of our council, especially looking at it from a leadership standpoint. So, just wanted to make that clear, that this was, I'm very thankful for the discussion we had, looking forward as our next mayor, hopefully we get to have this discussion again in the future, and really kind of address, and as Mr. Neil was saying, figure out what's going on in this role, so that we can have someone safe to come in after us. Because that's my biggest fear, is when I'm ready to leave this seat, there's not going to be someone that wants to fill it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-20, please.
Motion.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, which will mean we will go to a roll call vote, ordinance 24-20. Please go to your computers and cast your vote. Ordinance fails by a vote of five to two, zero, five, wait, no, two to five, yes. I got there, I got there, the last one. All right. Thank you for the discussion. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions, this is item number 10 on the agenda, 24-R-16. I need a motion, this is a resolution of the City Council declaring the results of the April 2nd, 2024 municipal election. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-16, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Please give us an overview.
We have received the certification from the county clerks, so for the seats that are open, which is nine, we have, for Mayor Eric Franklin, for Ward 1, Eric Gurkey and Justin Shaw, for Ward 2, Gary Wilson and Darren Campbell, for Ward 3, Chris Updike and Brian Fields, and for Ward 4, Justin Neal and Daniel Harder. All seven ballot measures did pass, so once we pass this resolution, our charter will be changed.
Excellent. Do we have any questions for our clerk on any of these issues? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do, all those in favor of 24-R-16, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes by a vote of eight, zero, seven to zero, sorry, I'm reading the script, seven. Um, I haven't done this, like, this way, so we, we swear in the new officials?
We can swear in, and then we can have your outgoing remarks.
Do you want me to do the outgoing remarks, and then the swearing in?
Yes, that works.
All right, let's do that. I wrote something. It, it's right here. See, I did my homework. But, this all kind of happened accidentally. I didn't mean to be sitting in the mayor chair, I didn't, I didn't mean to have this happen. I'm really, really happy that it did. This has been one of the most challenging, but exciting, professional things I've ever done. I'm a lawyer, so I tell my kids that I help people, that's what I do, that's what I do for a living. But, I don't get to help people in my day job in the same way that I get to help people here. And it's been incredibly rewarding and very difficult. Four years as mayor, two years as city councilman before that, Eric and I came on literally the exact same night, he was saying the other night, that his first act was to vote me in when a council member had stepped down, and it's been an honor. I want to thank the citizens. We're not all going to agree. In fact, some of you very strongly disagree, and that's okay. I did my very best to represent each of you to the best of my ability. So thank you for allowing me to do that. To the city staff, I wish I could pick you up and take you all with me, because your dedication and your heart for what you do is unlike anything I've seen. I've worked in other places, I've seen other city staffs, other city staffs, and I would put you up against any of them. It's the truth. So thank you, thank you for allowing me to be a part of the team. I, I would say I'm a small cog in this machine, but thank you for allowing me to be that cog. It's appreciated. I want to thank, as long as we're on YouTube, we're still on YouTube, right, Chris? All right. I want to thank my law partner for putting up with this, because this has taken money out of my, my law partner's pocket, out of my pocket, because I'm doing this stuff. And he had to be supportive, and I appreciate that. I appreciate my friends and family, I appreciate my new friends that I've made in this process. But, out of everybody, I have to say thank you to my wife, Crystal, and my boys, Alex and Nick. This is not an easy gig for the families that go along with it, especially when you've got boys in middle school. The things they hear about what their dad did can crush a kid, and it's hard. So, they, they owe, they are owed an apology from me for putting them in that spot. But they have come through stronger, they have learned lessons that will serve them later in life. So there's a good, but there's a bad. But I want to thank them for supporting me and the pep talks. When I started, and I'm almost done, Eric.
Take all the time.
No, I appreciate it, man. When I started, my oldest son, Alex, was in first grade, and now he's in seventh. And the switched, I mean, the things he would say to me in the last six months to give me a pep talk are the things that I was saying to him in second and third grade. He's, "Don't worry about it, Dad, just do your best." I mean, that's awesome, as a dad. So, being mayor has allowed me to become a better dad, because it allows me to see the evolution in my kids in a different light, and I appreciate that. And you see, I should have stuck to my script, because it wasn't as rambling. This has been an honor, and it's a privilege, and I'd like to think that we've made some progress, and I'm very excited to see the continued progress. And to the new mayor and council coming in, you're my mayor, and you're my council, and I appreciate what you're doing, and I look forward to your continued success, and I will be cheering you along from the sidelines, but not necessarily in these meetings. So with that, I'd like to turn it over for the swearing in of the new elected officials.
Do you want to do plaques real quick?
Oh, we do plaques.
They're still going to watch this on YouTube, right?
No, he's not.
I can promise you, he ain't watching YouTube.
Councilmember Burlick, as an outgoing city council member?
Oh, do I have to?
Yeah, I know. They got plaques, they didn't talk to me about this. Do you want to stand there? Do you want to?
I wore my best basketball shorts for this, so. I'll stay right here.
Brandon Beck, isn't that a Brandon Beck moment?
No, that was wrong, that was wrong.
So, Mr. Mayor, I said my parting words last meeting, and you weren't ready for them, but.
I wasn't.
I want to thank you for your service, I've been doing this in, in government, and worked for a lot of great mayors, and like I said, your work has been second to none. And I know, I know the nights, like I've said, the intense fellowship that we've had, but we've become extremely good friends through that. What I can tell you about being the mayor is, when you're going through COVID, or you're going through different elements, and people are asking you to do certain things, and we're not always going to make the right decisions, and you're going to be criticized through that, and so, and I know that there was times that we would talk about, even during COVID, like, what do we do? And I know how it weighed on you, and I know how it weighed on the former mayor, and so, but I just, I just want to tell you, because I know The Voice, and Crystal, the First Lady, you'll always be the First Lady. Thank you for your service to the community, thank you for the nights that we would sit in my office and cuss and discuss what we needed to do, what was in the best interest, even amongst criticism and things that we knew that would be difficult, and so, but you stood in there and you took it, and I just want to tell you, I appreciate your leadership in this body, because for those that are here that did not get to be a part of it, when he says, "I want to hear what you have to say and listen to it," we take notes to it, he always followed up with me the next day, because he wanted to make sure he provided a response. And so, he does care, so I know that if you have a complaint, he still would be more than happy if you'd call him.
I'll do what I can, I'm, I'm very limited at this point, though.
But anyway, I know you won't watch the meetings anymore, but I'd definitely come and watch The Voice play basketball, so.
I know you will.
Wish you all the best in your, your endeavors, and if I ever need a good attorney, I'm calling you.
Thank you.
All right, if all the new council want to come, step forward.
Is this a secret handshake?
Oh, yeah.
Do y'all want to stay up there to swear in? Okay. I'll be nice. Um, Dan, if you want to go over there? If you all don't mind standing up and raising your right hand? Let me get back here. I'm blocking both cameras. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for my office by law.
Prescribed for my office by law.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri.
And of the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Affecting cities of this class.
Affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Republic.
Of the City of Republic.
And that I will faithfully demean myself in office.
And that I will faithfully demean myself in office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations to all of you. Breaks of my chairs.
Do you have a pen?
It's a really nice pen.
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you very much. Definitely like to thank, I know they've already left, but definitely thankful for Mr. Russell and Mr. Gurley for everything that they had brought for us. I know this last week, after looking in the mirror so much, it is very difficult for a lot of these situations to explain to your family, so I'm very incredibly thankful So, I'm very incredibly thankful for their family for allowing them that opportunity to serve us. Moving on with our meeting, we are, will move on to the election of our mayor pro tem. With the mayor, the election of our mayor pro tem, the city council shall elect annually from among its members a mayor pro tem at the first meeting after each municipal election. The mayor pro tem shall assume the powers and duties of the mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor or when a vacancy of the office of mayor occurs. At this point, I am going to open the floor to a motion for a mayor pro tem. Gary?
I nominate Eric Gerlick. He did good the last year.
Okay. We've got, we've got a motion for Eric Gerlick. Do we have any additional motions? Seeing there are none, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Neal has seconded this motion. We'll go immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Do we have any abstentions? Motion passes 7-0-0.
Hold on, Mr. Sorry, my bad.
So, moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances. First of all, congratulations. We now have Eric in there. That might be some trouble, but congratulations. Moving on to new business, we have item number 11, 24-21. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-21 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title VII utilities of the municipal code of the City of Republic, Missouri by adding new chapter 720 illicit discharge into municipal separate storm sewer system.
And we have Angel Falick here to give us an overview this evening.
Good evening. Angel Falick, city engineer. I'd like to congratulate all the new members and welcome back all the old council members and new mayor.
Thank you.
If you would bear with me, I'm going to be sharing a lot of acronyms tonight, so just bear with me for your first night for this new item. Build's Department is introducing this ordinance to help support and strengthen our stormwater management program, in short, SWIMP. Our SWIMP is required by our MS4 permit. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, and that includes any stormwater conveyance such as curb and gutter, stormwater pipes, detention basins. The MS4 permit is issued by DNR, Department of Land and Natural Resources, and that permit requires the city to fulfill control measures, one of them being illicit discharge detection and elimination. And illicit discharge can be anything from pet waste, yard waste, debris, stormwater runoff from construction sites. And basically, this ordinance will give the city the authority to enforce, investigate, and hopefully remediate any illicit discharges within the city. With that said, the staff recommends approval, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from council? I've got a question. Is one of these examples like a sump pump underneath the house that empties into the sewer system?
That's an exempt, an exemption, so you're allowed to discharge that into here.
Okay.
And I just wanted to share that all this information can be found on our webpage, republicmo.com. If you have any questions, just reach out to the Build's Department, and we can share what those exemptions are.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
Angel, just to be, so we're not in noncompliance with the MS4 permit at the present time, is that correct?
No. We are using this to support our MS4 program, and this is something that our auditor will be looking at whenever she comes, comes to city.
Auditor with DNR?
Yes, sir.
So, for the citizens that drive down the street and you see all those black-looking tubes that are around a construction site, that is to stop the stormwater. So, that is what, when you see that, that is a compliance order to make sure that storm water, or mud, does not get into the ditch. So, what you're saying is this is pretty much making it better for us so that we do not fall into noncompliance, similar to the wastewater plant project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments for this one?
There are no comments for this.
Do we have any additional comments from, comments, questions from council at this time? Seeing none, please remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Item number 12, 24-22. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-22 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .4 acres of real property located at the 300 block of West Broad Street from medium-density single-family residential R1M to two-family residential R2.
This evening, we have Patrick here for us.
Good evening, Patrick Reese, associate planner. I just want to say, going to Angel's side, so congrats on the new council members and the incumbents, so.
Thank you.
So, the applicant Inclusive Housing LLC has requested a rezone of property at the 300 block of West Broad Street from R1M medium-density single-family residential to R2 two-family residential. The property is approximately .4 acres and is currently vacant. The lot is adjacent to R1 zone properties to the east and west and to the south across Broad Street. To the north is M1 light industrial. The general land uses in the area are residential and commercial nature, thus making the rezone request compatible with the surrounding area. The site is in close proximity to water and sewer services. Such infrastructure facilities have the capacity to serve the intended use. The property will have access off Broad Street, which is designated as a local, commercial, and multifamily street due to its direct connection to surrounding Collector and Art dealer streets of West Avenue and Main Street. Based on this information, staff recommends approval of this application.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from council? No questions from council. We do have one citizen for participation this evening on this item. I'd like to ask April Swanson to please come forward. Welcome.
Hi. My name's April Swanson, and I live on Harrison Street here in Republic, or I've been calling it the Postal Highway because they just zip up and down that street. So, I'm from Republic. I am a very small builder, so my reason for wanting to rezone to a duplex on this property is pretty much financial. I build accessible houses, so that means that the people who rent from me may use a wheelchair or a walker, or they have a kid that has a special need or something like that. And so, what I build always has zero-step entry and roll-in shower and those type of features. The financial reason, the duplex there, bringing in the rents from the two sides, just allow me to keep the rent low and to cover the mortgage, that I, I don't have deep pockets or anything, and this is my, this would be, if approved, this would be my third or fourth build in the city. So, it's, it's not like I have a lot, but I have a real passion for this, for building accessible housing, and this is my home, and I want to do more of it here in Republic. So, this would allow me to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do we have any questions from council? No. Thank you. That was our only one. Okay. That was our only citizen tonight for this topic. So, please remember, or if there are any other questions, get with staff before our next read, next meeting. Moving on to number, item number 13, 24-23. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-23 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately five acres of real property located near the 1100 block of North Main Street from medium-density single-family residential R1M to high-density single-family residential R1H.
We have Chris Taber here for this evening.
Good evening, Chris Taber, principal planner. The rezone request that you have before you tonight is an application to rezone a five-acre parcel from medium-density single-family residential R1M to high-density single-family residential R1H. It is also connected, it's related to the rezone that we'll see next as well. The subject property is located adjacent to the following zoning districts. Green County Zoned Agricultural to the north, medium-density single-family R1M across Main Street to the east, medium-density single-family R1M and high-density single-family R1H to the south, and then agricultural zoned property to the west. The requested zoning district is consistent with the residential uses of the adjacent properties. Both the water and sewer systems are in proximity to the site and have the capacity to serve this site. A traffic impact study was conducted along with this application and indicated no new improvements were required. There are no areas of floodplain on the subject property, and there are no sinkholes. The proposed rezone is judged consistent with the City of Republic's adopted plans. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on this last week and voted 5-0 to recommend approval to the council, and staff is recommending approval as well.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Taber, so do they have the exits, I mean, do they just come off the existing roads, or do we know how the, the traffic would fill out of there?
So, at this point, we do not have, you know, an application for a plan associated with this. The rezone that you'll see next is 25 acres. It's that ag piece next to it. Were this to go as a development, we would, there would be a Main Street exit, at least one. So, we wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be a project that just funneled straight into all the other neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Neal.
One question, from watching the planning and zoning meeting, I know there's a lot of numbers thrown out there. If the total area was rezoned to high, what's the maximum number of houses that could be built?
So, if you stacked everything in like Tetris blocks, and you didn't build any streets or any detention or anything, 180 lots could be in there. Again, we, we do have a very preliminary, preliminary plan, but what you're going to get is much closer to between 100 and 120 lots realistically.
Do we have any more questions? Seeing council hasn't no more questions, we will move on to citizens' questions. We will start with those speaking against. If I could ask Jody Gouldson, please come, Goodson, please come forward. And we have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for us.
Hi, I'm Jody Goodson. I'm at 117 West Wilson Street. I'm budding up, I'm in that R1H, budding up on both those properties there. I know the gentleman that just spoke said that our sewers and all that can support this. I disagree. I submitted pictures about the stormwater problems that we have in that area, in that retention ditch right behind my property. We already have issues in that area. So, there's that. Traffic already backs up to, at certain times of the day, already backs up all the way to Berry Street at certain times of the day. They said that a traffic study was done. I asked what time of day it was done. They said it was done at peak hours. I'm not sure if that was done during the school year or not. I'd like to know. I'd also like to know, or they actually told us at that meeting that that traffic study is not taking into account the building that is already taking place on the east side of Main Street, just north of this, where this map is located. So, they're already building homes there. This traffic study is not, that they did, is not taking that into account. They said the rainwater and everything would be, it would hold 100-year storm and one foot above, and they were also talking about putting a pond in that area. I'd like to point out that there's, everybody keeps harping on this sinkhole, but there is a sinkhole that's budding up on this property, and they have not done a study on that sinkhole. They said it didn't need to be done. I think maybe if we're going to be building houses this close to a sinkhole that we already know is in place, maybe we should study that sinkhole. Because guess what? You're adding all those houses up on the east side of Main Street. Oh, now we're going to add another 100 houses on the west side. Oh, and there's also going to be asphalt with roads and, you know, maybe basements and a pond and all this stuff. What's that going to do to the sinkhole? We don't know. We haven't studied it. I'd also like to point out that, and we, we talked about this at the, at the other meeting, that the internet in this area is not up to standard. I, I know all of you guys already have jobs and things like that. We all here several years ago worked on, at home.
Sorry. Thank you very much for coming to speak with us this evening. Moving on to our next citizen, we have Alma Shores. Alma, would you please come up? Alma will be speaking against.
Hi. My name is Alma Shores. I live at 105 West Wilson Street. I'm actually on the corner of West Wilson and Main. My first point that I want to point out is our zoning says R1H. R1H is considered high-density, which is 7,000 square feet. However, I have gone through and looked at every single property that is the R1H, and every single one of those properties are 9,000 feet or square feet or more. So, that would be definition of a R1M. That would be a medium-density per the 4 or 5.090 definition ordinance. I have included, which I will be happy to give you guys, the square foot of every single one of those properties that are considered R1H. Also, during this week, we have created a petition of our neighborhood, and I would like to present that to you guys, of multiple signatures against changing that five acres and the 25 agriculture acres into high-density. I don't know if I need to give this to you now, or if I need to give this to you after that reading of the agriculture.
Mr. Mayor, you can present us, even with the document that you have that you presented with the, if you'll just give those to, to the clerk.
Okay.
Then we will make sure that.
Perfect. I'll.
Yeah, yes, because on the, you can hold her time, please. So, the other thing about is, is on a, on a petition, what they'll do is they'll go through and certify the petition as well.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Perfect. All right. So, that, just for definition reasons, so trying to move a high-density area to build is not congruent with our neighborhoods, even though, even if it was high-density, there's only three of those yards that actually touch that, that neighborhood that they're wanting to put high-density. That, that doesn't seem congruent either. Also, just like she said, the traffic is time, it actually comes up to Wilson at times. The school traffic is better, thank you. However, it is not solved. Okay? And that's going to continue to get worse, especially when we have 120, 125, which is what the developer said last week, along with the 120 that's going north of that. So, you have all that extra traffic, all those extra kids, all that extra school traffic, all those ex, everybody uses in highway to access to I-44 along with EMS, law enforcement. There are people, I have sirens going by my house all the time. With traffic being backed up, that does make that dangerous. That does make that hard to access I-44. There's been times where EMS could not get through until cars went into the ditch. And.
Thank you, Alma. So, we have Heather Calhoun. Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Yes. My name is Heather Calhoun, and I am at 109 West Wilson Street, and dealing with the traffic issue that pretty much all of us are going to speak about. However, I have been in contact with MoDOT because we were quickly informed at the last meeting. meeting that the City of Republic cannot do anything about the four-way stop, nor can they do about the dangers of N and Farm Road 168. So I took it upon myself to call MoDOT and find out why. So as of right now, I'm waiting on a call from the OTO, who is actually the group that organizes and funds, to see if we are able to fund those two areas. MoDOT is the one that needs to do the survey. It does not need to come from somebody that the developer sends out, but it actually needs to be from the traffic engineer that is oversees the Green County area to do that survey. So I do believe that another survey needs to be done on Main Street, and one done as an unbiased opinion. The study also did not take into account at Highway 174. You have 291 single homes plus 300 multifamily dwellings. So that is another, close to 1,000 more cars that will be coming up on that four-way stop in order to get into Republic. That was not taken into account in the survey. Also, dealing with the sewer system, I do not know if the water and sewer was also planned for the 125 that are on the northeast. I also would be interested to know if the 291 dwelling plus the 300 multifamily is also feeding into that particular sewer. I believe that more studies need to be done on that as well. I'm going to take a look at my notes just to make sure. So yes, and to follow up with MoDOT, at this time, the last time they did a survey was in 2021, and we might be on the books, but priority-wise, they do not know where we stand. So with MoDOT, they do a five-years-out, so minimal, we're five years. And that four-way stop and that danger zone at N and Farm Road 168, where we have numerous accidents, we can't wait and put all these houses up and not have that fixed. We don't have sidewalks along one, or along North Main Street to get to Sweeney, and that is a danger for our elderly and for our children. We need sidewalks as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's please hold a pause. So, do we have any more?
We have two speaking in favor, so Mark Stiles.
Mark Stiles, speaking in favor, please come up and give us your, your name and address, please. You've got three minutes. Thank you.
Mark Stiles, good evening, mayor and member of council. Mark Stiles, 207 East Wilson. Main Street is a primary arterial classification street, south of Lapis, it's a 30 mile an hour zone. North of Lapis, it goes to 45, according to the MoDOT 2023 traffic counts. North of Lapis, they have 3,100 cars a day, and south of Lapis, 2,600 cars a day. I want to take you back 10 years. I wrote, Mr. Wilson, and Mr. Brock, my concerns about the lack of sidewalks along Main Street. And Mr. Brock informed me in 2014 that they had been in contact with the OTO, and sidewalks along North Main were the number two priority project for enhancing the pedestrian connectivity and safety. Here we are 10 years later, and we still have the same unconnected sidewalks. I followed up, at that time in 2014, we had 135 rooftops north of Sweeney, and that's where the current sidewalks stop. I followed up in 2016, the rooftops had increased to 166 approximately. I did not get a response from Mr. Wilson or Mr. Brock at that time regarding my questions. Followed up again in 2021, no response from, from anyone from the city. So right now, sidewalks, there is a quarter-mile gap between Sweeney all the way to Lapis, which is where the Emerald Valley subdivision is located, and they were required to install sidewalks as part of their subdivision development. If you go north of Emerald Valley, there's another eighth of a mile gap to the new, new subdivision, Harper's Ridge Phase 1, that's being currently built. The proposal, and I apologize, I'm going to use the numbers based on the number of houses per acre on the zoning. I'm hearing different numbers, but my numbers are coming up with possible 415 additional rooftops that could be built with these zoning changes, and I think that's a concern on top of the 178 we already have in the area, 178 rooftops. The stretch, Main vehicles travel much faster than posted speed, pedestrians have to take refuge on entrances and in the ditches. I personally been injured dodging traffic and have also witnessed near collisions between pedestrians and cars.
Thank you very much for coming to talk to us this evening.
Chris Nguyen.
So we have Chris Nguyen.
Christopher Nguyen.
Christopher Nguyen. Name and address, please.
Yeah, good, good evening. My name is Chris Nguyen. I'm a civil engineer with CJW Transportation Consultants located at 5051 South National Avenue, Suite 7A, Springfield, Missouri. I'm the applicant in this case, representing the developer, Enterprise Development LLC. I do appreciate you actually letting me speak last. Normally, we, the applicant speaks first, but speaking last gives us an opportunity to answer some of the questions that residents may have. So I'm going to go down the list, I was taking notes. The first thing I want to touch on is the traffic study. As mentioned, we do this during the peak hours. We looked at the AM and the PM peak. We studied 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and we studied 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, so we're trying to capture that peak hour of traffic. They are correct, we didn't study unbuilt subdivisions. We studied the traffic that was on our, on the road, and then we studied the traffic that we're going to be adding to the intersection, or, and onto the pathways of travel, but also into our, our, our traffic studies. We also do a 20-year projection, which projects growth at 2%. 2% is actually a pretty aggressive rate of growth for a city. So while we aren't necessarily taking into account undeveloped subdivisions or platted subdivisions, we do have that, that growth factor in there. As far as when the traffic study was done, it was sealed on February 26th of this year, 2024. We try to do the traffic studies, conduct our counts in the middle of the week without inclement weather, not on holidays. We just try to grab the average, average traffic, so we do middle-of-the-week, the PMP, AM peaks. So that's kind of where, how we got the, the traffic study data from. As far as the, the number of lots, the zoning code in Republic allows for 6.2, I think it's 6.2 homes per acre in high-density, that comes out to 186. I know the developer would be more than happy if I could get 186 houses on this, this property. We actually have just finished the preliminary plat that we hope to be able to submit to the City of Republic, 122 lots is, is what we're getting. And they average in size from 7,000 acres to over 10, 7,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet in size. So not, just because we can do 7,000 square feet doesn't mean we are. The sinkhole, we offered to study it. Green County geologist said that there was no reason to study it. Our intentions were to study it to find out where the true rim of that sinkhole was. They're always very conservative. We were hoping that we could study it, make it smaller, so we didn't have to have a common space on the, the backside of those lots. I guess really my point here tonight is, the, I know there's a lot of concerns with Main Street, Main Street's Main Street because it used to be the main street in the City of Republic, and it sees a lot of traffic. The question at hand today is, is the, are the R1H zoning applicable to this piece of property? We'll talk about the plats, we'll talk about the roadway systems, we'll talk about the stormwater when we submit the preliminary plat, but is R1H appropriate, adjacent to R1H, R1M? And if you pan out, you'll see on the next slide, on the next case, there's also some two-family, multifamily on the same road. So I think the question we need to consider is, is this zoning appropriate for this property?
Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Yep, that's all of our, so that is all of our citizens' comments. Does council have any additional questions? Mr. Gerke.
I know there's a lot of things we can, can't predict, but any other changes, you know, down the road, some of the MoDOT stuff that's happening that would affect this as well?
So in, in the admin report tonight, I was actually talking about that, the discussion about the five-year plan, understanding the STIP. So when you talk to OTO, the statewide transportation improvement program, they have an unfunded needs list, and so the intersection of Main and 174 is listed, so is Main and 60, as is Hamilton or Hampton and 60, and I believe ZZ and Hines. So it talks about there's 13 million in unfunded, but how you get prioritized in the STIP is basically based upon traffic count. I wish it was the other way around. They don't base the improvement until there's actually the problem that's there, which is what we're dealing with on 60 now, to get it widened to six lanes. So the more the traffic grows, that's how they view that in the STIP. So how it gets prioritized, it's not prioritized now, and when someone said the minimum is five years, I want to be realistic and tell you, I'm working on one right now, that if we see MM widen to five lanes in the next five years, now granted, we're working on that, but at the same time, it moves slowly in the STIP. So I can say, I've been here eight years, and we still haven't seen widening on, on 60.
Right, we won't see it on Main Street.
Yeah, if I was going to be realistic with just all of them, even, was it P Highway going out to Island Green, they changed. So I would say with the widening, just for, to bring that whole picture, it's not just because of the location, it's because the priority of the region is to widen I-44 to six lanes, and so where the money's going to go for any of it's going to be to widen I-44. That's a major project that the governor just signed, and that holds us all up in the, and I'm not saying it's a bad project, so don't get that part, but the funding is not driven by the city, but one is being tied up into other regional projects, like widening, like the, the project at James River right now, where they're widening that to six lanes, that just, it's, it helps the region, but that's money that doesn't come into the local area as well. But you're right, five years, I'd love to be optimistic and tell you it's five, it's probably closer to 10. But it all depends on how it grows, because they drive the money to where the biggest demand and need is.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
There's no other questions from council. I would advise council to watch the planning and zoning meeting. I know there were several things that were covered in the planning and zoning meeting with questions as well. About a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, not quite that long, but it was a lot of great information, so I'm very appreciative of everyone that contributed to that conversation. Remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting, and at our next meeting, we'll do our best to answer all of the questions before then. Item number 14, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-24 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 700. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 25 acres of real property located near the 1,100 block of North Main Street from agricultural, AG, to high-density, single-family residential, R1H.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Go ahead and give us an interview, please, or overview, please.
Good evening. So now we're talking about this piece to the west, the 25 acres. Again, these projects are connected, these applications. This property is also vacant. It is bordered by Green County Zoned Agricultural, A1 to the north, medium-density, single-family, R1M to the east, medium-density, single-family, R1M, and high-density, single-family, R1H to the south, and then Green County Zoned Agriculture, A1 to the west. Again, we find this requested zoning district of residential use consistent with the use of the surrounding property. Both the water and sewer systems have the capacity to serve the proposed zoning change. A traffic impact study was conducted for this application, that, and again, that, that study was done for the 30 acres at once to serve both of these properties for the applications. It indicated no new improvements were warranted. There are no areas of the floodplain present on the property. However, as one of the residents mentioned, there is a portion of this property that is not have a sink, it doesn't have an identified sinkhole on it. However, could, could you go back one map, please, Chris? So there you can see, that's where the Green County assessor site shows the sinkhole. They build that sinkhole map with LiDAR, and also some 1980 visual surveys that they did, that SMSU did back then. So those are considered, what we generally see are those, as Mr. Nguyen indicated, those are conservative estimates of where that sinkhole is. What the city requires is that no one is able to use any space within 30 feet of that sinkhole to build anything. So, and that's anything, no ground can be disturbed there, basically. So as the, as Chris was saying again, Mr. Nguyen, he, he indicated that part of this no-build area is what's on this property. So if this goes forward, and there's a, there's something platted there, they will have a common area that no lots can occupy, that will be taken care of, of the HOA eventually, and that portion will be, you know, something that they have to build around. No one will be able to build in any of that no-build area that extends onto this property, just as if the, the whole sinkhole was on the property. And all that construction, again, will be in accordance with Section 410.700, the city's adopted ordinances. The proposed rezon is judged consistent with the City of Republic's adopted plan, and again, P&amp;Z voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item. City staff is also recommending approval. And I'm happy to take questions on this, or also on any of the questions that are, items that were brought up previously by the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Gerke.
Mr. Tabor, is it, is it two different requests due to the ones currently ag and R1M one, or just because they're two separate parcels?
It's the parcels that make it two separate, separate requests.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neal.
When you say they're conservative with their estimates on the sinkhole, you're meaning they're going as, as safe as possible, as large as possible, right? Conservative, or?
Yes, so they take the LiDAR flyover that they get, which provides them with just information, basically, and then they set the parameters of what that looks like there. And so they judge a, they want to err on the side of safety. And so we work with the geologists over at Green County anytime we have a project that involves a sinkhole. And again, as Mr. Nguyen indicated, they've been working with the geologist to learn about that sinkhole, to discuss that with them, and make decisions in accordance with the experts that we work with, the Green County.
And you said that, so the building for, on the sinkhole, the rim, the rim is kind of what's identified by basically just the outline of what we see, and then what was the distance between that, between not being able to build anything?
30 feet from that closed contour that they've chosen.
30 feet, okay. So it'd just be another 30 feet from what's drawn there all the way around in the circle?
Yes.
Thank you. Any more questions from council? Mr. Gerke.
And you talked earlier, they were both proved zoned, would it be one parcel, so there wouldn't be any, would the beginning restricting the access to Main since they're separate parcels, would they be one parcel to allow, you know, to cut through street to go to Main?
I'm sorry, could, could you restate?
So if, you know, they're both two separate parcels, but you mentioned earlier, if they're both approved, that there would be access on Main, does that have any effect with it being separate parcels, or it'd be a combined parcel to allow through streets to come, connect into Main?
So for this project to work, both of these have to go, this can't be something that's going to be, like, if that 25 acres goes, it's not going to have appropriate access to serve those houses. We won't let all that traffic go through Benny and College. Really, these two pieces of properties have to go in conjunction to make the project work, so that they have access to that primary arterial. We don't want emergency services, you know, coming through that, we don't want all that traffic dispersing out through local streets and other neighborhoods.
Thank you. Any more questions from council? This time, we'd like to open it back up to citizens, just if you had anything else to add to this conversation, since they are both more or less tied together.
Again, it's Jody Goodson. I'm at 117 West Wilson Street. I'll try to pick up where I left off. Here a couple of years ago, we were all locked in, everybody was working from home. Internet continues to be a problem in all of Republic. Everybody at the last zoning meeting, everybody, oh, that's not us, that's not us. The road problem, oh, that's not us, that's not us, that's MDOT. I'm getting a lot of kick-the-can kind of problems, it seems like, is going on, because the only access we have... it seems like, is going on because the only access we have in that area is AT&amp;T. We don't have access to fiber. The T-Mobile satellite stuff doesn't work in that area. My family and several other families, all in that area, have people that either partially work from home or completely work from home. You're going to have a serious problem if you're adding more families with a bunch more kids because these sound like family dwellings, binding up all that internet. Give me just a second.
You're perfectly fine, take your time.
Oh. I'd like to point out the blue area in there. I do believe that is the floodplain area that's listed in there. Do we know what all this is going to do to that floodplain area? I've got a 14-year-old boy right now, as we speak, that is running around that area with all the boys in the neighborhood. And there's a creek that runs through there. And they're out there playing, literally out there. They're off the Xboxes, they're off their phones, they're out there. They're playing War and everything else in those creek beds up there. This community, I don't know if you can tell, is very tight-knit. We know each other. It's a wonderful community. And I know you say that it's, oh, it's lotted for this. It bunts up on all these single-family homes and everything. But part of that community is that open space that we get to see from our backyards. And it encourages our kids to go outside and go play. And we have kids in the road playing basketball and all those things that are important to this community. I'm okay with Republic growing, but it needs to be done in a way that doesn't sacrifice the heart of our town. And I think we need to keep that. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. So moving on, Ms. Alma Shores, did you have anything to add?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Three minutes.
All right. My name is Alma Shores. I live at 105 West Wilson. Along with what I did not talk about last time, putting high density, like I said, every one of those houses are at 9,000 square feet or higher. Putting high density is not realistic. Like I said, it does not, is not congruent. If you do put high-density housing in there, the likelihood of corporations buying those in for the purpose of renting them will actually devalue our current property. Because you get renters in there, they do not take care of their properties. They don't, and I'm not saying all renters are that way. I used to be a renter. But a lot of renters do not care for their property or for the houses. And that will actually decline the value of our current properties. So, you know, we need to fix these foundational issues. You guys paved College Street, which I was very grateful, until everybody started trying to bypass that four-way stop. By zooming down, and I do mean zooming, down Wilson, going down to College to try to avoid that four-way stop. And they are going faster than 30 miles per hour. If you go from I-44 down Main Street, I'm telling you, they are going faster than 30 miles per hour after the speed limit sign. And I really, really wish I had a speed good because I would have taken measurements for you guys and submitted that to you. But unfortunately, I didn't think of that until too late. The developer did say that they would put sidewalks in that neighborhood, but they would not, you know, put any sidewalks from, of course, that Lapis or that new neighborhood up to Sweeney. So we still would be a disconnect. So great that they're going to put sidewalks there, but there's a disconnect to the rest of the city. If you put 120 to 125, if you take just West Wilson, East Wilson into Benny and then the Lapis and Blackstone neighborhoods, that's 125 houses. So you're going to double the amount of houses just from those three neighborhoods. To add to fourth, you're going to double it with just the fourth neighborhood. That's a lot. And College is Benny, even though the thought is not to have traffic going through there, it's going to hit and it's going to hit hard. It's already there. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. So Heather Calhoun, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I am going to talk a little bit about unpredictability on sinkholes. My husband and I moved over at 613 Windmill Place. Oh, I'm sorry, Heather Calhoun, 109 West Wilson, my apologies.
Thank you, thank you.
In 1998, and the huge retention ditch that is off of Heinz Street that now has a sidewalk over it. When the horrible rains hit in 2006, that developed a huge sinkhole on our property. Fortunately, we had wonderful councilmen at that time. Mr. Jim Collins was the mayor, Mr. Hunsaker, and of course, we all know Ms. Jerry Poole. And they actually went to bat for us, filling in that sinkhole, not making it a danger because it was going to disrupt Heinz Street. We had too much of a retention ditch from all of the flooding. There were four major sewers that went into that retention ditch. That cost the city over $40,000 to fix. It was not known when the Triple S or Triple M properties built that. And there, praise the Lord, nobody got hurt. But it did take the city almost a year to fix that sinkhole. Now we have one that we know about that, yes, we have not studied. But again, those sinkholes are so unpredictable. And the retention ditches that we have behind Ms. Goodson's house and a couple of others, the probability of that sinkhole doing damage and flowing into them and not being in a flood zone, possibility of not having flooders insurance that they cannot get. We can't get it. Our agent told us we were not allowed because we were not in a flood zone. So as councilmen and as the city, if you choose to do that and that sinkhole creates flooding, are you paying for our houses that get flooded out? Because we cannot get flooders insurance. And along with College Street, that Benny Street and College Street, you open those up, even though that 25 acres, we don't need it. If you've got those five acres, they're going into Main Street. But the 25, they're going to come straight through College Street. They're not going to have a stop sign. They're going to be flying through. They don't stop at the stop sign we have now off West Wilson. They just whip in. Not only that, College Street is basically an alley road. Once the school bus drives down on it, there is not a car that can be crossing with it. So it's not a two-lane road.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stiles?
Stiles, 207 East Wilson. Three minutes goes by quick.
Absolutely, it does, very fast.
When I moved in 2001 to my house, behind me where Emerald Valley is now was a pasture. My subdivision had the platted streets. You knew there was going to be development in the future. I think that's the case with these two subject properties. Housing is needed in Republic. I understand the reason for the developer wanting to build here. We're just seeking responsible development and the infrastructure that can handle it. And also, I'd encourage Mr. Cameron, I'm sure he is, but there, I work for the City of Springfield, and I know there are a lot of projects that if you can tile, tie a trail or a sidewalk to an improvement, seems like you can get funding. So I encourage Mr. Cameron to be aggressive with all the federal funds that seem to be flowing from Washington right now to try and get some grants for these improvements that are much in.
Thank you very much. So we have one more citizen, Christopher Nguyen.
Chris Nguyen, located at 5051 South National Avenue in Springfield, Missouri. Civil engineer representing the developer. Couple of things I want to touch on. The reason, one of the reasons, we're looking at two different cases here. The five acres versus the 25 acres. The city council that was replaced tonight, within the past couple of months, annexed that 25 acres into the City of Republic. The five acres was currently in the City of Republic, had City of Republic zoning. The 25 acres was in the county. So we went through the process in the prior months, earlier months of this year, to annex that in. And now we're in the process of rezoning it. But it does remain two separate parcels, will develop as one. As far as the sinkhole, the setback from the sinkhole, the city does require that 30-foot rim offset to be within common space. But beyond that common space, there's also a rear yard setback on all of those lots that are adjacent to that sinkhole. So ultimately, a house has to be a minimum of 55 feet from that sinkhole, once you take in the 30-foot rim offset, plus the 25-foot rear yard setback. And that's assuming the house is pushed all the way to the rear of the property, which is unlikely, but we'll assume a minimum of 55 feet on this. As far as internet, I can't really speak to the internet service. I actually appreciate that comment. That's one I don't hear very often. We do a lot of developments in Republic's rounding areas. And one thing I don't hear very often is internet. The one thing I will say is, city staff mentioned at the end of the last meeting, the best chance of getting new internet service to this area is to develop the area with more housing because it's easier to put in new internet infrastructure in. When you put in new lots, new roads, new rideways, it's easier for them to come in and put in their equipment. So, you know, that is what it is as far as that's concerned. Stormwater, the FEMA floodplain, that dash blue line you're looking at up there, ultimately, our development will have very little impact on the floodplain itself. We'll have to, and this will come up a little bit in the plating stages, but we will have to put in a stormwater detention basin similar to the neighborhood has to the south. We have to detain that water. We cannot legally let that water leave our property at a higher rate than it currently does. So we won't be just letting all of our water go into that floodplain. And then sidewalks, sidewalks have been brought up. I know that there's not really much for sidewalks along Main, but I do know that the City of Republic has on previous developments and will on this development require us to put in sidewalk along Main Street. And I know it's only a few hundred-foot stretch of sidewalk because we're only responsible for the sidewalk adjacent to our development. But, you know, it's one of those things you've got to start somewhere. And as more developments come in along Main Street, more parts of sidewalk will be built. And it's easier for the city to come in later on when, you know, there's segments of sidewalk built all the way up and down Main Street and connect those as a project to improve connectivity. So that's kind of where we're at. I do have a packet of information I'm going to leave with a clerk that was brought by the developer, kind of some stuff that they can distribute to you guys. It gives you a better idea of what kind of homes and what the relative layout would be of this.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Do we have any additional questions from counsel? Seeing there are none, I want to remind everyone that this is a first read. So if you have any additional questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. I am going to move on to other business, but I also wanted everyone to know here, I know that everyone would love to stay till the end of our meeting. If you were here just for these two reads, don't feel guilty for leaving. I know we all have a lot to do in our lives. So I'm going to give you just a moment. If you would like to leave, you're more than welcome. But if you want to stay, you can stay as well.
Yes, yeah.
I was going to say, I was like, that is Heather Newcomb.
Yeah.
Her dad was my high school baseball coach.
Sorry. You're fine. I didn't want to get the meeting off rail. At this time, we are going to move on to other business and resolutions. Item number 15. We have 24-R-17, a resolution of the city council authorizing execution of a public donation agreement with the Republic Historical Society Incorporated for the donation of certain real property located at 217, 221, and 225 North Main Avenue to serve as a site for a future historical museum. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-17, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Or do we have any abstentions? So the motion carries 700. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. They still got to vote.
We're not there yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're getting close.
So Terry Mooneyham approached this body, what, two months ago, and requested consideration for the city to make a donation of public land, which was the old, actually, the old Public Works building. I believe at one time, it was the city hall building as well and many other things that was there. Evaluated the site as potentially as to utilize the building, deemed it was unsafe. And even from the first time when we went to put a trackhoe near the building, the front side of it caved in or caved out. So basically, what they're looking to do, they presented this body with a site plan for what they, with a great big vision for what they want to utilize the property for. And so they are applying for a grant. And so having this particular resolution will actually help facilitate that grant. It's not the first time we've ever considered this with other opportunities. But what we did is we've drafted for you tonight a resolution that would allow us to negotiate an agreement. So basically, it gives them an instrument that they could apply to the grant in their application that says, hey, this is legitimate. The elected body has set it into motion. But we've kind of set the parameters for what that, what we would negotiate with them in good faith, an agreement for the future, which pretty much outlines 217, 221, and 225 North Main. To be clear, one thing about it is, and Terry, this is just something that you would not be aware of and this council would not be aware of because the property, our planning staff has informed me that because in government, that those are not zoned properly. So there would have to be a zoning process to get them rezoned for those applicable uses. But I don't foresee that being a problem. But I also want to make you aware that there would be an application process to have them rezone. As you'll see in the resolution, it highlights the donation, a timeline for when construction would need to be completed. It's kind of what we call a clawback that say the funds were not raised at a certain period of time. But again, there would be an opportunity to come back and apply for the same application or donation. It also states that this would be the only financial contribution to the actual project itself so that there's no future utilities, operation, and maintenance of the facility that it would still be for. This is the city's only financial investment to the property. And so that's what the agreement would look like. But other than that, I'm glad that Megan, you did a great job of pulling it together. Terry, thank you for allowing us and for all those that are here for this particular topic. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. But we are definitely recommending the approval of this resolution.
Thank you, David. Do we have any questions from counsel? Mr. Gerke.
Appreciate all the work everyone's done on that, the historical society. So just to clarify, if they weren't able to raise the funds to utilize the project, then the donation would not happen?
It would revert back to the city. But in the, what I would foresee is, it's like what we did with the Green County, the library, the Springfield, Green County library. We were working with them on a land donation. And it's like, okay, we can't have it out there in perpetuity that it's sitting there for 10 years. But like, if you're a million and a half or $2 million away and you're in year five, it allows like, okay, the intent and the nature of the resolution is to provide time for that to happen. It's not like a, but you just don't want it sitting out there for 10, 15, 20 years waiting for that. So it's kind of like, and I believe they've been very aggressive to us. I mean, one thing about it is, it makes it kind of easy because they're as ambitious and hungry to get it done. And so you kind of like that, let them pursue that. And so I think it's only fair, but grants are not easy always to get. And sometimes it just takes time to get the in-kind donation to go with it. So I think that it's meant to be five years with the potential to extend it another five if necessary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
And also, just for the council members, Exhibit B that's attached to the resolution in your packets, that's a copy of what the public donation agreement we would negotiate and execute, likely in substantial, in the same form, is attached there with the legal descriptions and then with the terminology that Mr. Cameron referenced on the reversion, would have handled by a special warranty deed.
Okay. Thank you, Megan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
I want to point out one more piece to this overall discussion, just so I have it on the record, because I've brought it up before. We're moving this resolution forward because it's applicable to the grant that they're trying to apply for. What I would like to bring back to this council is consideration to donate the property that the city hall is currently in that only houses about five to six people that they would actually, because once this donation takes place, it pretty much eliminates the future city hall because there is no, there's just that little, the old bank that's there. And while it has its own expenses, significantly expenses to address it, I think donating that for their use-
it like, what happens with that property? I would like for there to be at least a council dialogue in the future, over the future of where city hall needs to be and what we need to do, but also how to transition that property to their control as well. So that's something that will be coming up, that's not relevant to this, but I also want to make sure that we do not lose sight, that the current city hall facility, at some time, I would like to at least have us have a dialogue about donating that property as well, which I just repeated myself four times.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any additional questions from council? Seeing that there are none, as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any that are opposed? Any abstentions? This motion carries 7-0-0. Moving on to item number 16, we have 24-R-18, a resolution of the city council authorizing the builds department to apply for the multimodal project discretionary grant program in partnership with the Ozarks Transportation Organization and the Missouri Department of Transportation for the Highway MM Expansion Project. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24-R-18, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. We have Mr. Tabor to give us an overview.
Good evening again. The builds department is asking for authorization to apply on behalf of the city for the multimodal project discretionary grant, MPDG, in partnership with the Ozarks Transportation Organization, OTO, and the Missouri Department of Transportation, MDOT, or MoDOT. The grant application is for $25 million to construct projects relating to two segments of the state highway MM corridor, segments B and E on that map. The last letter, the last letter in those lines, on those different colored lines, are the letters that we're discussing. So segment B goes along MM from I-44 to James River Expressway and would expand the road to five lanes. And segment E starts at James River Expressway and ends at the proposed roundabout at Farm Road 160, and also includes lane expansion. The city's portion of the matching funds for the project would be approximately 1.4 million. The resolution tonight does not appropriate any funds or commit the city to making any kind of financial outlay. It's simply authorizing the submittal of the application to the United States Department of Transportation for the project. If the application were to be selected, council would vote on allocating those funds at the later date.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Gurke?
The blue section too, and it's not necessarily, but that will be completed when MoDOT does the road there, correct?
That blue section is already programmed, and that's supposed to start next year.
Okay. And then the orange section?
No, it's unfunded yet, so it's on the unfunded needs list.
And that would tie into the trail they're putting now by the high school that connects to Wilson's Creek?
There are trail components that are built into that project, to the various, to some of these components, particularly on the blue section, I'm aware. I don't know if there's a tie-in to that southern section. There's very little information about that available. It's, again, it's in very preliminary.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
So Eric, one thing that's nice about the orange piece is to even have it on the map, that they're actually scoping or looking at it as half the battle. So starting to even get to that point, they're at least discussing it. So being on the unfunded needs list is better than not even having it scoped at all. So that was never even discussed. So all of that can be brought up, like, because I see where you're going, it's like, will we tie the trail from the school into that highway system that'll take us all the way out to the regional park and things of that nature, even out to Iron Grain and all the way out, potentially, I mean, I'm not going to say to I-44, but into that capacity, all of that will be evaluated in the scoping of that orange piece, but it's, right now, it's like that, good luck, type of project.
That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be done like the blue section is going to be when that road's done. It's not allocated.
No. So yeah, that's a great question. So for those that are seeing this online or watching particularly, that blue section is the one that goes around the fuel farm, the new traffic light, which is a temporary structure, but that's where the permanent signal will be. That program, as he's saying, is programmed, which means it is fully funded. It has the railroad overpass, it goes out to bid in fall of 2024, starts construction in 2025, and I believe completion in 2026. It will not be open before the new school is open, but it'll be coming shortly behind. Then everything else to the north, we're still working with MoDOT on the funding for MM. I believe this actual application is another opportunity to apply for additional funds. We currently have a, I don't remember what it is, $45 million raise grant, maybe, I may be way high on that, but also, as you know, we're working with MoDOT right now, we're about $2.5 million short on widening that to five lanes, and that would be fully funded if we can come up with the other $2.5 million, which we are continuing to work on. But it's never, it never hurts to apply for a grant, and if you can get it all built for us just contributing a million and a half or a million, 1.2 million versus 40 million, it's pretty decent. But who knows?
Sounds like a pretty good deal.
It's worth applying for the grant.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any additional questions from city council? Seeing that there are none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. Moving on to number 17?
Seventeen.
Okay. It's not in number 17, 24-R-19, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to negotiate an agreement with Olson Incorporated to provide engineering design services for improvements to the Heinz Street and ZZ Highway intersection. We have Stephanie Duncan here this evening. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we don't.
I'm Stephanie Fitzpatrick Duncan.
I'm sorry.
I'm an engineer for the builds department.
I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24-R-19, please.
Motion.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. My first mistake of the evening, so I apologize very much. I'll get it right the next time. So Ms. Duncan, thank you. Will you give us an overview this evening?
Yep. I'm here to talk about a resolution to negotiate with Olson Engineering for the design of intersection improvements at Heinz and ZZ. We selected Olson through a qualifications-based selection process, and they were the high scorer of that process. So moving forward, we would like to procure them for engineering services of that intersection. While this project's currently unfunded, that's typically the next step, is to get engineering plans in place so that we can be competitive for any cost share opportunities or other grants that may become available. So that's why staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Cameron?
Mr. Mayor, you did an excellent job with that. The governor's cost share program is what she's referring to, which is the same project that we're doing on the MM widening, and so that would be the process that we would use, possibly capital improvement sales tax funds to partner with the governor's cost share program, so it'll be something that we apply for after we address what's working on MM, but great job on the selection.
No additional questions from council?
Thank you.
As this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. I guess that was our last item on the agenda, and that will move on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to your new role, to all the council members that were sworn in. Welcome back, Dan Harder.
Why do you keep looking at me?
Dan was one of the originals whenever I came onto this council, and so I know his heart and passion for being on the council and his service to do that, but it's great to have a full body in an election terms and a structure for that, so I look forward to working with each one of you for the term that you have and what we are going to be working on. So there's some information, there is an elected officials training, because things have changed the sunshine law, and just on May 17th, there is a training that'll be in Springfield. We encourage everyone that's been elected to join that, because if you want to learn how to create a law, how to bring an ordinance for the council, should you or should you not talk to one another, how to stay out of trouble with the sunshine law, please get with Laura. We're asking everyone to participate if you can, but we're also going to have a council orientation and go over every project that's ongoing in the city, just to bring everyone up to speed, some already know, some do not know. And so we didn't do on this last year because there was going to be a change in the council, so now that we have a seated council, a fully seated council, and you know, because like, Justin, when you and Brian came on in what?
September.
September, so a lot of new faces back up here. And so what we want to do is start introducing, as Mayor Franklin, I might get used to that one.
Me too.
Stated, we're wanting to do lunch work sessions and things of that nature, to start bringing some of these projects more, talking about density, talking about where to put a city hall, talking about where sidewalks need to be. There's been a lot of discussions at sessions and talking about where we are and what we need to do. I'm looking forward to introducing those and working with the mayor to do that. That's something he and I have talked about prior to him taking his seat. But I would encourage, so there will be a meeting where we'll talk about all the projects. We'll also talk about a lot of things that are going to be upcoming for this mayor and council to, in the admin report, one of the things that I also provide is a admin report after every city council meeting that is available online to the citizens. In that admin report this time, there is a OTO report about what we call the funded and unfunded needs list. And one thing about it is that I've heard a lot about, and I think it's pretty interesting in that discussion about transportation in and around the city. The one thing, I understand when someone says we're avoiding it because it's a state highway, when it's a state highway, it's kind of like a city street. MoDOT's not going to come in and fix our city street any more than we're going to go fix their state highway, but there is a way for you to comment to MoDOT, where they do listen, just like we have public comment, we allow for that. MoDOT, or OTO, the Ozarks Transportation Organization is currently in their seeking input phase, and we're going to post on our website, if you have comments about the transportation in and around Republic, we are going to do our best to spotlight this for the citizens to go onto that website and make your comments known, because when the city of Republic comments, we're one comment. So if I send one comment on behalf of the city, it only represents one, but when the citizens comment and they all go in, they have to consider all of those. So we've got to do a better job, and this is just on myself, is like, we've got to make sure you, the citizens understand, here's a way for you to get involved, to actually motivate or help MoDOT see that we have this need. So we're going to do our better, I mean, I almost don't want to put a sign out here, if you've got a problem with the traffic, scan this bar, you know, but that's kind of where I'm at right now, especially at Main and 60, and maybe even Main and 174. So I just encourage, we're going to do a push to get this, a QR code, or Chris would prefer we not do QR codes. We'll find some way for you to communicate to MoDOT. But one thing I want to make mention of, it's not even in my notes, but to Angel, to Stephanie, Chris, Jen, Lisa in the back row, you guys can't because, but to our young talent that's in this room, our up and coming leaders that are emerging, it's fun to watch you all perform in your functions and just do what you do for us every day, and for those of us that are, I don't want to say, Lisa's looking at me, don't say it, the AARP club, you know, but I just want to, Dwayne, you're beyond me. But I'm impressed with the talent that's in this room, and Mayor Russell actually said it when he, the staff that we have, we get a lot of credit for the growth and development, and a lot of that gets directed towards my office or administration and that, but really, what really makes us go, are you the employees? And I just, I love seeing it. I know you guys are nervous when you're up there. I remember my first time getting in front of an elected body, trying to explain that and praying to God to get your name spelled right and your job title right. Chris, you've just, you've grown leaps and bounds, and I just want to stop and thank you all for the work you do and how you make us all look good and keep it on the rails. So, Mr. Mayor, it's all have.
Thank you, David. Do we have any reports from city council? Seeing there are none, I guess it's my turn. You know, just to reiterate what David said, you know, as we're approaching people with different issues, especially when it's MoDOT, OTO, doesn't matter who it is, even approaching as a city council member, this elected body, any email that you send us, any input that you give us is worth so much more than just that simple relay of information. And so if these opportunities for input are available, I encourage everyone to please participate, because that is more valuable to us than that simple conversation, and having that on something we can present is very valuable. So just to kind of touch on what David said, I agree very much. Thank you for trusting us as your city council. Congratulations to everyone that's up here for the first time. Some of us are veterans, of course, and you know, I just look forward to our future together as a city council. I appreciate everyone being up here, and I appreciate all of our families for giving us the time to come up here and represent the citizens. I know just from tonight, we got to hear that in all the goodbye speeches, and it's always something that's very close on our mind, and so thank you very much for trusting us, and thank you very much for all the families that trust us to be up here. Thank you to staff, and I'm going to agree with that, especially going back to the planning and zoning meeting, excellent job on answering questions. I know not everyone gets the answers that they want, but that was a great job. Really appreciative of the planning and zoning 101 again. Took me a little while to hang on to get there, but still enjoyed it when we got there, so thank you very much. I do have one other thing that I would like to mention tonight. I know a lot of us, if you had an email and it came from Most Cities, Ramona Huckstep, we have here recently in Republic, one of our city council members had nominated Rooting Republic for the 2024 Missouri Municipal League Innovation Award, and it's an award that has to be nominated by an elected official. It's covering cities of our size between $15,000 to $30,000, we're across the state of Missouri. So in that email that they sent to you, there are 23 projects across the city, across the state of Missouri, that are in competition for this award. And so I encourage everyone to go down there, read through that, that's a lot of our neighbors across Missouri and Rooting Republic, which is Republic. If you could vote for Rooting Republic, I would really appreciate it. I know all of us as elected officials got that email, and so if you go through there and look at it, Rooting Republic would appreciate your vote on that. Other than that, thanks to everyone that came out for voting. I appreciate you hanging out with me tonight and all the mistakes I made. Hopefully, they weren't bad ones, but I apologize for all the ones I did make. With that being said, I'd like to thank everyone for being here today.